Using our resources to the best of our abilities and most productive ways. Promotion of tourism products. So you guys may think of tourism or product as like a box of detergent on the grocery shelf, or a Coke that you'd buy at the convenience store. Products in my line of work are things like trails and events and historic sites. And so promoting these products is what we do at my office. So we have a dedicated website, visitclevelandtn.com. Search engine optimization, digital marketing, Google AdWords, social media channels like Facebook and Instagram. We do a visitor's guide, we do map pads, we do brochures, we do media relations. So we have tours that come through from the state tourism department, and we'll host media people, travel journalists. And also, we have ads in the Tennessee Vacation Guide and Home and Farm. Now, this has changed so much since the 24 years since I started. We used to buy a little bit of ad in Southern Living for like $7,000 and hope that somebody would see it that month. It is so different now because you can spend $7,000 on social media and everybody sees your stuff. So it is amazing what we can do with the resources that we have now. We try to make sure that we market our community in three brand pillars. We don't have a beach. I don't know if y'all noticed that or not. Did y'all notice that? And we don't have a roller coaster. But what we do have is a little bit of a lot of good stuff. And so it's hard to communicate that unless you put it into three, into some way to communicate it. So we have three brand pillars. One is outdoor adventure. So adventure, heritage, and charm are the three brand pillars that we use to explain the experience of visiting our community. So right next door to us, of course, in beautiful Polk County, there's the Ocoee River rafting, Hawassee River floating and fun yakking, and of course, our section of the Hawassee River. We've got hiking, biking, camping, picnicking, fishing, horseback riding. We also market our compelling history. We have a nationally significant story here with our Cherokee heritage. And part of that is at Red Clay, part of it is interpreted at the Hawassee River Heritage Center, but it's all over this area. If you live in Bradley County, you live in where the Cherokee Nation used to be located. Civil War stories, TVA and industrialization, historic downtown, religious heritage, agricultural heritage, these are all things that we can gain products out of and experiences that we can market to visitors. And then the next one is Southern Charm. We have a walkable downtown, unique dining, cute shops. And we have stampers. Everybody just kind of takes for granted the things that have been around. Stampers is 100 years old, and it's right here on the downtown square. We just kind of take, you know, the courthouse is here and stampers is there. You just don't realize that people come here just to shop at stampers. Events in all seasons, farm fun, vineyards, orchards, corn mazes. So what prompted my visit to you today, tonight, is the Department of Tourist Development releases a study each year, and it's the latest economic impact figures for all 95 counties of Tennessee. The study is called 2022 Economic Impact of Travel on Tennessee. I've got the study, I've got two copies of it in my office if anybody ever wants to see it, but I'm going to give you the highlights. What's the impact of tourism on our community? What is the impact of visitors coming and spend their money? For instance, Denny, if you go on vacation, or Commissioner Collins, if you go on vacation, what's the number one thing that you do on vacation?
Eat.
Eat? And it costs, that costs?
Money.
Money. So yeah, Commissioner Slater, when you go on vacation, what's the number one thing that you do? And it costs money. So the number one thing that you do when you go on vacation and that I do is spend money. Spend money is your number one activity. People spend money in our community to the tune of $178.5 million just in Bradley County in 2022. That is a 5.8% increase over the spending in 2021. And it's a 28% increase in spending over 2020 because that was our COVID year. Thank goodness, we weren't hit too hard, but we bounced back and then some. So I'm very, very pleased with that nice 5.8% growth rate. We've had years where we've been the highest growth rate in the whole state, higher than Memphis, higher than Nashville, higher than Chattanooga, or any of those other big cities. And those were the times when Bakker was being built. And all of our hotels were being stayed in, all of our restaurants were being eaten in, and all those folks there, that 2,500 people at one time were building Bakker. So they had to stay and sleep and eat somewhere. And we reaped the benefits off of that. Visitors generated, I want you to pay close attention to this. Visitors generated $17.5 million in local and state sales tax. $17.5 million in local and state sales tax. That's a tax savings of $428 per household. That's services that were paid for by visitors that households did not have to reach into their pockets and pay themselves. Our visitors paid them. So let's give them a big old hug when we see a visitor because they're helping us pay for our police and fire protection, our roads, our, the things that we enjoy as citizens. The greatest thing that I do in my job and the impact on the community is, I'm a hometown girl. I went to Bradley High School with Tim Mason. And I'm a hometown person. And I get the privilege of marketing my own hometown to visitors. So that is just the greatest honor of my life to be able to, to be able to market and promote my own hometown. And whatever I do for visitors, or whatever we do at the Chamber for visitors to make a visitor experience more pleasant, it's more pleasant for residents. They reap the benefits as well. So that's a wonderful bonus. How is tourism development funded? So the Chamber's Tourism Development Division is funded through a portion of the lodging tax. So that's a pass-through tax that is paid for by visitors to the hotels. You all collect it, and then I get 19.6% of it. The remaining distribution goes to Tri-State Exhibition Center, Chamber's Economic Development Division, the County's General Fund, and towards satisfying the bonds for the Spring Branch Industrial Park. So this is the part where I, you know, have just a tiny bit of whining and say that most, most cities our size are funded through their lodging tax to the tune of about 80 to 90%. But the only reason I want to point that out to you is because we do a lot with a little. The resources that you give us, we are good stewards of it, and we do a lot with those resources. So I just want to make sure that you all understand that I very much appreciate that 19.6%. And we, we use it to the utmost at the Chamber of Commerce. Potential tourism products, I already mentioned, events, stories, experiences, trails, tours, historic sites, exhibits, museums, sporting events. Placemaking. Placemaking is the process of creating quality places where people want to live, work, and play, and learn, and visit. And so I'm, I'm much in the business of placemaking. I have an ad agency that does a lot of our promotion. I manage our promotional efforts and our digital marketing. And that frees me up to be able to do this. And that is placemaking and come up with great ideas like the Redback Hymnal exhibit. I learned through our connections and through relationships that I had built across the state. The Tennessee State Historian was here on another subject matter talking about Cherokee history, Commissioner Thompson. And he said, Melissa, the state is going to come out with a music trail, and if you don't get something that people can see, you're not going to be on it. So typical, set my pants on fire and get to get to work. And so I brought a committee of people together, and for two years, two years, we talked about who are we? And one of the first things I told them when we got in that room is I looked at all of them and I said, okay, we're the gospel music capital of the world, right? And they looked at me and they said, no. And I knew that we weren't, but I said, then what are we? What is our story? What's different than anybody else? Anybody in Southern U.S. can have a gospel music story, but nobody is the home of the Redback Hymnal except Cleveland-Bradley, Tennessee. So that hymnal was started printing in 1951 at Tennessee Music and Printing, which is now Pathway Press. And millions of copies of it went all over the world from Cleveland, Tennessee, and nobody else can say that. So that's what I do as a tourism marketer. I find out what our story is that nobody else has. So there we are on the Tennessee Music Pathways Trail. We were on it. And I sat at a governor's conference on tourism when they started talking about the trail, when they finally got it funded, and here we appeared on it just like magic. Because we'd done the work and gotten it set up. The Hawassee River Heritage Center is another one of my projects. And I helped to raise $750,000 to buy and expand that center and also to do the trail in the back. That was a $250,000 federal grant to do the Trail of Tears Tribute Trail in the back of that center. Led the charge with the Charleston Calhoun Hawassee Historical Society, a wonderful bunch of folks in the north part of your county. And we are so proud of what we could do there. Charleston was the, the operational headquarters for the entire Cherokee Trail of Tears removal. So if you don't know that, please go to this center and learn a little bit more about it. And Darlene, Darlene Goins is up there to talk to you about it. There's the trail in the back that we got the federal grant for. And there is one of our official National Park Service signs that we are allowed to use now because that center is certified by the National Park Service on the National Trail of Tears Historic Trail. Anybody have a passport from the National Park, a National Park passport? I've got one. I got it at Mount Rushmore. And guess what? I can go to Charleston, Tennessee and have it stamped with a National Park Service stamp. I can also do that at Red Clay. Come on. Don't fail me now. This stuff doesn't just happen. I've been working on that Cherokee project for over 15 years, and I've built relationships with all these people. And so have the folks in Charleston at the Historical Society. These, these things don't just happen overnight. Somebody's out there building relationships on your behalf. Speaking of weird things that come from people's brains, the cow pee festival is a way to fund the Hawassee River Heritage Center. And so this year, we cleared about $35,000 with the cow pee festival so that it could go to the operations of that Heritage Center. You've got to be able to keep the doors open and pay the bills. And that's what the Harvest Festival with a funny name does. We are headed toward our 12th festival on September 14th, 2024. That celebrates an agricultural history in Charleston. Anybody can have a Harvest Festival. Anybody. Anybody can have a Harvest Festival, but nobody has a cow pee festival except for Charleston, Tennessee. Nobody in the whole world. That's why it's international. This, it's not just a silly festival either. It has actual goals that we've met about and we've set, and we strive for these goals. We raise awareness of Charleston and the history that's there, celebrate community and cow peas, it's a community connector, grow to a regional draw, which is where I come in. I want people to come here and spend their money and go back home. And raise operational funds for the Hawassee River Heritage Center and create a sense of place for the Charleston community. And they are really proud of that festival. We had over 5,000 people at the festival last year. There's some fun sights from it. Bush Brothers, we are so grateful for their sponsorship and all the other sponsors that we have. And then another crazy idea is the Hot Slaw Festival. Y'all, anybody can have an arts festival. Anybody. But nobody upon nobody has a hot slaw and art y'all festival. So we've got the third one coming up on April the 6th. We raised, it's a nonprofit festival as well, and we raised funds for public art projects. And it is a partnership between Artists Here Partnership, Visit Cleveland at the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Cleveland, and City of Cleveland. And it's kind of being known now as the city's or the community's main festival. And as you all know, hot slaw is pretty famous around these parts. There are 12 restaurants that carry it regularly. There are five grocery stores that carry it regularly. And if you go to Athens or you go to Chattanooga, nobody knows what you're talking about. But I realized that on a media tour. I had 14 culinary journalists here from all over the South, and I started talking about hot slaw. We were sitting at Jenkins. And I started talking about hot slaw, and they didn't know what I was talking about. Because I grew up here. I thought everybody knew what it was. So what do we do? We form a festival about it and have people come here and spend their money and go back home. And have fun as residents. So event goals, raise awareness of local artists. We have a very vibrant local arts community. Celebrate community and the unique history of hot slaw. Grow to a regional draw, raise funds for public arts projects, and create a sense of place for the Cleveland community. There it is. There's Sammy the Slaw Dog. And this is the big crowd that was gathered to watch the Slaw Dog Eating Contest. That was the first year. And then we also do a songwriters qualifying round in conjunction with the State Department of Tourism. They have Tennessee Songwriters Week, and we do a qualifying round here. We have about 350 people that come. We hold it at the museum, and our contestants that race to the top go to Knoxville or to Chattanooga. And this year, we've got the opportunity to send two folks to Knoxville. And it will be in January. BMX Track Improvements. So I've been working with Chris Knowles at the BMX Bike Racing Track. You have one of only four active USA BMX-approved tracks in the state of Tennessee. And Chris has put a lot of his sweat and tears into improving this track. Mayor Davis has been great to partner with him and with us on improving the track. You can see, it looks great. I, I have got, I'm fortunate enough to have some ARPA funds. That's the Americans Recovery Act from COVID. And I'm planning to purchase a new start gate for the BMX track to the tune of $29,000. So I'm purchasing that from the Chamber of Commerce with my ARPA funds. And Chris turned backflips when I told him that. But that's going to allow them to be in better running for a national race. So a national BMX race would bring in a lot of money to the track and a lot of money to our community. So that's what we're headed for. And there is, we're putting in a national race bid. It's due by the end of this month. And then other ongoing projects are things like Friday festivals. The Chamber partners with Main Street Cleveland to put on free festivals every Friday in June. Bakker sponsors those. We're doing Christmas on the Square with a partnership with Main Street on November the 17th. And we sponsor museum programming and partner with them. We're part of the Civil War Trails. We're part of, because of that Tennessee State Historian that I am friends with through all the things that we've been doing the last 15 years with Cherokee heritage. He came down with his students from MTSU and completely renovated the Red Clay exhibit that had not been touched in 40 years. And so it is fantastic. If you've not been down there to see it, it's wonderful. And we support their program, programming and projects. And then right now, we are helping to plan the 2024 National Trail of Tears Conference. It's going to be held in Hamilton and Bradley Counties coming up in October of 2024. So we're very excited to be a part of that. Another place that we are kind of a sense of place is Art House. It's a shared studio incubator, and it's located underneath the Cleveland City Ballet in the Old Woolen Mill. And I sit on the Artists Here Partnership Board, and we have helped with our ARPA funds to do a startup of this shared studio. This, there's a lady that's there, this is the best way I can explain this studio. There's a lady there named Lala. Lala works at Subway, building sandwiches. Lala is a fantastic artist. She shares one of these studios. There's no way Lala could do that on her own. She doesn't have the resources to do that. But Lala's artwork is fantastic, and she's now there at Art House sharing her ideas, building inspiration from other artists that are there, and she's making art and painting there at Art House. So it's a wonderful thing. We are headed toward So In, which is south of Inman. I don't know if you're familiar with New York City. South of Houston Street is Soho. South of Broadway in Nashville is Sobro. And south of Inman, we hope to be So In. And that will be an arts district that we can offer up as a place to host visitors and residents alike. Future projects, I've been talking with Mylan a lot about sports development. We, I've also talked with the city manager about that. And I am willing to put forth my, some of my ARPA funds to partner with the city and the county to do a sports assessment of what our properties are, what needs to be addressed, what's the competition like? I mean, is there some kind of crawdad tournament we're not taking advantage of? That there's nothing like that in the region? What's our potential that we're not addressing? Arts developments in the future and present. Grow what we've created and be open to new ideas. And this is just a little fun thing that over the last 24 years, as I was looking back to do this presentation for you, I ran across the 1999 figures when I first started at the Chamber. And the figures now, and they've increased in the last 24 years. 140.1% increase in visitor spending and a 180% increase in sales tax collected. So I'm pretty, pretty proud of those numbers and happy that we were able to see a nice increase and healthy growth rate in our visitor spending. So with that, I'll take anybody's questions if you're still awake. Anybody have questions about what we do? My door is always open at the Chamber. I love to talk about this stuff. I could keep you here till about 10:30, but I know you don't want that. And, but I, I love this community. I love what I do, and I'm very blessed to have this job. It's my dream job, and I'm happy to, to be able to serve my community in this way. So thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Melissa. We appreciate, we appreciate that report, and we appreciate what you do. Lots of exciting things going on in our community that a lot of people don't even realize. So many of them. While she takes that down, you have in front of you the updated ARP plan. I'll go over and explain the latest developments in it. You see the parts highlighted in yellow? Everyone have the plan in front of you? The parts highlighted in yellow are the parts that have not yet been approved. They're merely becoming part of the plan. Everything else has been approved. The water projects in yellow in that top right box are going to be approved tonight. So that yellow would go away. The Sheriff's Department fence in the middle bottom part, that would go away. But as of right now, what's in yellow are parts, are things that we've added to the plan based on requests from various departments and so forth, and have not been approved. In other words, we'll be having to come back to you with amendments before those can actually happen. They need to be part of the plan before we can move forward. On the water bucket, this $385,000 that's in yellow, like I said, you'll be approving tonight. That'll bring the water bucket to $1,152,708. With the two additions to affordable housing, that'll bring the housing bucket to $1,113,375. Again, the parts in yellow have not been approved, but are merely becoming part of the plan. Of course, your essential worker pay bucket, $7 million. Your sewer bucket is all allocated. I'll give you an update on sewer in a minute, but it's all been allocated. It's $1,018,070 in broadband, still waiting on it to happen. But $4 million is committed to that. So spread fairly over the things that you all approved early on to spend on ARP. The box in the middle has been growing as we moved on. This is the box that is at the county's discretion, and we've been spending it, I think wisely, for things at the Sheriff's Department, Ambulance Department, Sheriff's Road Department, various departments. And what's in the yellow at the bottom are what's yet to be done, once they become part of this plan. You have a letter explaining to you about the fire engine request from the chief. Actually, it's fire engines with an S on it. We've got another request from the Road Department. This includes money for a tractor and four, I guess, salt spreaders. He actually requested money for two tractors, but there's money there for one tractor, four spreaders. Of course, the fence are going to prove tonight. The Justice Center phone system, I don't know if all of you have heard about that or not, but we'll be replacing the phone system, which is in its last leg, outdated and so forth, at the entire Justice Center as well as the courthouse and annex. Right now, it's just at the Justice Center, so it's listed as the Justice Center phone system. That amount should take care of the, the purchase part of it. A lot of it will be ongoing annual fees, of course, like any phone system. But the things that have to be purchased will be covered with the ARP funding. And then Tri-State, there's a small amount there to end it all up. And I think Mylan is in the process of verifying. But if you add all the buckets up, they come to $20,999,100, which is the amount that we receive from the federal government. Now, I know some are going to say, what about the interest? The interest is accumulating as we speak. The one good thing about things like broadband that haven't been spent yet, they're committed to, but that money's still in the bank drawing interest. So the, the interest is accumulating. The bottom left corner tells you the amount set aside for development district fees, and it's being paid from the interest, but that's the only thing that's coming from the interest. When we're through with all of these buckets, we'll have a decent pot of money of interest that has been made off of them, and that's to be spent at your all's discretion also. I hope that you don't try to spend interest money until we're through. Let it accumulate in the meantime, and then you will have a pretty decent bucket of interest money to come in the near future. All right, having said that, I'll stop and answer questions. Surely, there's some now. Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, Mayor, the phone system, is that just for the Justice Center? Or is like that $50,000 covers the cost of the courthouse, the annex?
It should cover both.
Cover everything.
Yeah, I'm just listing it as Justice Center. But it's approximately, it'll be two different projects. I'll say that for obvious reasons, but it's approximately 25 each on the purchase part of it. We already have, by the way, when we put in that new system, it's going to be what you call a internet-based phone system, right? Voice-over IP. There'll be ongoing annual or monthly fees that has to be paid. They're pretty much in line with what we're already paying. But everything we have now will go away, and it'll be a voice-over IP system in place. Like I said, right now, it's getting to the point where we can't even buy parts if something tears up. So our system here was put in in 20, I believe, in, in 2000. And the Justice Center was put in in 2004. So that, it's, it's time to replace them, and this is a good way to, to do it with the ARP money.
Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, do you have an update on where the community service shelter is in their project?
Where the what?
The shelter.
Oh, they had to start all over and get an architect. That has been done. I don't know if anything's happened since the, the architect. The development district has stepped in and is helping them now. We should have done that to start with, but it's going to move. It's needed more than probably any of the projects here. But it's, they didn't start it out like they should have and had to start over.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
What she's talking about there is in the affordable housing bucket, the community shelter, the $100,000, the city committed $100,000. So they've got a $200,000 addition to build additional homeless shelters. Shelter is what I was trying to think of, but I don't know the new timeline on it.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Elrod Park.
Sir?
Elrod Park.
Elrod Park lights are in here. They're already up there in that middle thing. You go up, you'll see them about halfway. Is that what you?
Yeah, what's the timeline?
Uh, he's got the price. They're working on it. They, it will happen sometime, it's budgeted. So it will happen sometime in the winter months before spring baseball, I think is his timeline.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Sewer update. Sewer update.
Okay, well, I'll switch to that. I was going to do that next. But the RCND, 89 contracts, 76 of them have been finished. I'm convinced they're going to drag it to the first of the year. But anyway, 76 out of 89, so that's 13 more to go. Of our 18 projects that we did in-house, 14 of them have been done, so we've got four more to go. I think each one of them is probably, in the last month, they've done three, and, and we've done one in-house. So four have been done in the last month. Going to that rate, we'll probably be finished about January-ish. But it's all committed, so.
Anyone else? Commissioner Wood.
Is road striping completed?
Oh, no, that'll be ongoing. It's all been PO'd. He PO'd the full amount. I don't know the latest amount that's been spent, but a lot. But keep in mind, the projects, for example, Walker Valley Road is a state aid project, and they take care of the striping and all too. So, but he's done several roads. You've got a meeting, is it tomorrow? He's going to give you an update on the striping, but a, a lot of roads have been striped. It's moving.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mayor.
If I could, this is, this doesn't approve anything as far as the individuals because we'll have to come back with amendments. But I would appreciate it if you could go ahead and approve the plan so that this is our updated plan when we have to present it with our report to ARP. And this wing- And this will include what's been approved and what will be approved in the very near future.
Commissioner Slater makes the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hughes on the second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Allford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
14 in favor and none opposed.
Thank you and I, I appreciate that. You have a list coming around. I'll give it a second to get on around. I have one, two, three, four, five appointments to be made to three different committees, one on the Planning Commission, three on the Stormwater Advisory and one on HCI. Respectfully ask for your confirmation of these five individuals.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Hughes, do I have a second?
Thinking.
Commissioner Goins, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Allford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
14 in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. That was quite a bit there. A lot of money transferred around on that one. All right, we're now going to go to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Goins and Winters. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Allford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson. 14 in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll now go to the reports from committees and our districts. I remind you to please put the red button on if you're talking. We'll start on the right with Commissioner Beatty.
In the first district, I ain't got a lot to report, but I have for the Calhoun County, all the farmers in the, have been set, they got a drought relief program coming out and they need to call the Farm Service Age, Agency and set up a form to get theirs approved. And even the other surrounding counties got in drought relief too.
If I could add to that, Mr. Chairman, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, I guess it is, declared Bradley County as a disaster area for the drought, which will enable farmers to apply for, I guess it's low interest loans, but anyway, special disaster loans. So that's just been announced in the last day or so and that'll, that'll help a lot of people because I'm telling you, the drought's really getting bad and there's nothing but dead grass out there now.
No, part of it is, like for cattle, they'll pay so much heed on cattle.
Yeah.
Could I ask that the banner consider giving us a little publicity on this? All right, go ahead, Commissioner Beatty. Is that it? Thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report as far as district wise. However, you notice my better half is here tonight keeping an eye on me. I, I don't normally get into personal conversation, but tonight I will. We were speaking earlier and I was talking about the children. I jokingly said that they really liked me a lot better than they did her. And to my surprise, she agreed with me. I thought I'd just won something. And then I heard her say, it's when I'm not around.
The truth finally came out, didn't it? Is that all, sir?
That's it.
All right, Commissioner Allford, please.
Just one comment from Mr. Hughes there, that usually the ones that they don't like is the one of discipline. So obviously, Mr. Hughes doesn't do that. The wife has to do all that. Other than that, second district's doing well. Thank you. I've got one other thing.
Go ahead, sir.
This on the committee reports, Mr. Chairman, due to the fact that we have several commissioners planning to travel during the upcoming holidays, I'd like to move that we cancel the November 27 work session, the December 26 work session and January the second voting session.
Thinking.
Do I have, that, we have a second from Commissioner Blake. Is there any discussion, please? Mr. Thompson.
November 27, December 26 and January 2.
All December, all January.
Yeah. Call the question.
Any other?
Obviously, we have no consent on that.
Call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Allford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson. 14 in favor and none opposed.
That it? Commissioner Allford.
Yes.
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met earlier today and voted a number of recommendations. The first recommendation is, recommendation is to construct a fence at the Justice Center using art money. The mayor just went over that with you. You have a copy of the resolution and, and the amendment. Mr. Chairman, I put this in a form of motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Slater on the second. Any discussion, please? No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Allford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson. 14 in favor and none opposed.
That it? Commissioner Allford.
Yes.
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met earlier today and voted a number of recommendations. The first recommendation is, recommendation is to construct a fence at the Justice Center using art money. The mayor just went over that with you. You have a copy of the resolution and, and the amendment. Mr. Chairman, I put this in a form of motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Slater on the second. Any discussion, please? No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Allford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson. 14 in favor and none opposed.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met last month and with five organizations requesting funds to prevent, treat or trans, transition opioid cases, please keep in mind we have $171,000 to award, but far more was requested. We voted to recommend awarding for the proposals as detailed on the opioid funding recommendation spreadsheet. You may see that we voted to recommend fully funding proposals from ATS The Bridge and the Boys and Girls Club. We also voted recommending partially funding the Carrying Place and the Foundation House. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation to award ATS The Bridge $65,000, Boys and Girls Club $30,000, Foundation House $25,000, The Carrying Place $50,000. Put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Goins on the second. Any discussion? Mr. Chairman. Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I am, I have an indirect conflict of interest on this subject. I am a founding member of ATS The Bridge. I acknowledge this and I will vote my conscience in this election.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Allford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson. 14 in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll now go to Commissioner Collins, please.
Paulswell III have nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. 60 Highway and I guess the construction that's going on there is really moving forward. The bridge is just about totally completed, but there will be some changing of patterns on that highway. It's going to be five, five lanes. Will eventually move forward to two lanes for the preceding number of months that are ahead. So be very aware as you go through where Cleveland Middle School is, where the highway moves, moves everybody over to what would be the southern side of that road. Also, speed limits in there are posted. There is some movement where you're in such a hurry going down that hill to try to make it where we're going, that it's very easy to speed through there. Also, we're seeing through stop signs, through stop lights where you, the red lights coming on, that there's a lot of movement, it seems like, to be trying to get through that light as it's, as it's turning red and there's a potential of accidents that will be happening, not only on that road, but some other, other roads involved. I'm, I'm one of those guys that's in a hurry and it's very easy to find yourself moving forward. Congratulations to Lee University on a tremendous homecoming that just went forth. For 60 years has gone by since the Lee Singers were formed and that group was celebrating. Several of the clubs that were begun 60 years ago were, were celebrating their 60th year, which is showing the stability of that institution and the camaraderie that's a part of the campus there. A beautiful time. A lot of the traffic was going during that time because there were 400 members of one choir here, from out of town, most of them, other for their clubs in place. And it seemed like it moved very smoothly with the numbers are in town. But congratulations to Lee University on a great homecoming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes. Thursday had a wonderful time at the Pi Center. Toured the Pi Center, had Thanksgiving dinner there and Commissioner Slater's meeting. It was wonderful. I encourage you to go to the Pi Center and take a tour of it. It is amazing what these kids are being able to do and accomplish. And when they graduate high school, what they are going into is full-fledged jobs. Library Sentinel, congratulations on 100 years. It was amazing time there. Thanks for the little token. It was beautiful. And Beauty and the Beast at Bradley High School. None of y'all got to attend that. You're talking about amazing performance. It was great. So if you get the chance to go to any of the schools performing arts and stuff, I'm going to try my best to go to quite a few of them if I can. Go to them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, please.
Don't have anything to report.
Commissioner Goins?
Fifth district's doing well.
Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Population Trends Ad Hoc Committee met last week to hear the preliminary results of the Bradley County Schools Capacity Study. The committee asked that the impact of a number of underway residential developments to be considered on the county schools. The Population Trends Ad Hoc Committee will meet again next month to review the findings and I'll invite all of you to attend the meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Wednesday will be a road committee meeting here in the commission room at 9:00 a.m. I was out on a work detail property this past week and you hadn't got a chance to drive out to Bancroft Road. You need to drive from it from end to end on, on Bancroft Road. They did an awesome job on, on paving out there. And we've already got a Household Hazardous Waste Day. We're going to do a spring Household Hazardous Waste Day. I talked to mayor this week and got together with, with the sheriff to have it over at our facility at the Justice Center. It'll be March 23rd at 8:00 a.m. to noon. And that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
And that was Hazardous Waste Day?
Yes, Household Hazardous Waste Day and we're going to do a spring.
If I could add to that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We have applied with the state to hold a second Household Hazardous Waste Day. We used to fund two of them ourselves. They got so expensive, we cut it back to one, but the state has offered to do us a Household Hazardous Waste in the spring. We've requested that date. They have to see that we meet all the criteria, which we do, but they've not officially gotten back and approved that yet, but that's, hopefully will work out and we'll be doing it March 23rd, like you said, and it'll be, hopefully at no cost to Bradley County. Household hazardous waste costs us a lot of money, but this one will be a second one with no cost because we don't have enough in a single budget here to do two.
But congratulations to Lee University on a great homecoming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert.
Yes, um, Thursday had a wonderful time at the Pi Center. Uh, toured the Pi Center, had Thanksgiving dinner there and, uh, Commissioner Slater's meeting. It was wonderful. I encourage you to go to the Pi Center and take a tour of it. It is amazing what these kids are being able to do and accomplish, and when they graduate high school, what they are going into is full-fledged jobs. Uh, Library Sentinel, congratulations on a hundred years. It was amazing time there. Thanks for the little, uh, token. It was beautiful. And Beauty and the Beast at Bradley High School. If none of y'all got to attend that, you're talking about amazing performance. It was great. So if you get the chance to go to any of the schools performing arts and stuff, I'm gonna try my best to go to quite a few of them if I can. Uh, go to them. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, please.
You don't have anything to report?
Commissioner Goins?
This district's doing well.
Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Population Trends Ad Hoc Committee met last week to hear the preliminary results of the Bradley County Schools Capacity Study. The committee asked at the impact of a number of underwa, underway residential developments to be considered on the county schools. The Population Trends Ad Hoc Committee will meet again next month to review the findings, and I'll invite all of you to attend the meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Wednesday will be a road committee meeting here in the commission room at nine AM. I was out on a, um, work detailed property this past week, and, uh, if you hadn't got a chance to drive out to Bancroft Road, you need to drive from it from end to end on, on Bancroft Road. They did an awesome job on, on paving out there. And we've already got a, uh, Household Hazardous Waste Day. We're gonna do a spring Household Hazardous Waste Day. I talked to Mayor this week and got together with, with the sheriff to have it over at our facility at the Justice Center. It'll be March twenty-third at, uh, eight AM to noon. And that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
And that was Hazardous Waste Day?
Yes, Household Hazardous Waste Day, and we're gonna do a spring.
If, if I could add to that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We have applied with the state to hold the second Household Hazardous Waste Day. We used to fund two of them ourselves. They got so expensive, we cut it back to one, but the state has offered to do us a Household Hazardous Waste in the spring. We've requested that date. They have to see that we meet all the criteria, which we do, but they've not officially gotten back and approved that yet. But that's, hopefully, will work out, and we'll be doing it March twenty-third, like you said, and it'll be, uh, hopefully, at no cost to Bradley County. Household hazardous waste costs us a lot of money, but this one will be a second one with no cost, 'cause we don't have enough in a single budget here to do two.
Thank you. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let's remember Steve Hartline and his family in, in our prayers. Um, his daughter had a ATV accident Friday. And second item, um, had several issues that I gave to Lori. I just wanna throw a thank you out to Lori for taking care of those issues for me in great detail. And go Bears. And I've got a number five granddaughter, I just got told Friday. So it'll be my fifth granddaughter, and other than that, Mr. Chairman, Sixth District is doing well.
That's great. Way to, way to little great grandchildren come along. Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say, go Mustangs as well, for Dr. Cash sent back there. Two, uh, two great teams, uh, continuing in the playoffs. And I have to thank, uh, Coach Alford and, again, congratulate him, but also thank him for, uh, bringing that recommendation to move those two dates. That just cost me another couple hundred dollars on vacation there at the end of the month, 'cause my, my wife will want to stay at the beach a couple extra days, so, um, I do wanna say on a personal note, um, I know we didn't have a m, meeting last week, but, um, last week, my Uncle Charlie, who's ninety-seven years old, passed away. And, um, if you knew Charles Howard, uh, Uncle Charlie, uh, helped build this community. He, uh, was probably one of the most forefront and, and, uh, most well-known, uh, plumbing suppliers at Cleveland Plumbing Supply, and he's the reason why my family got involved in the business, uh, in the first place, and had, had been there since nineteen fifty's and served as a board member of our company for a long time. But, um, Charles Howard was a legend when it came to building houses and, um, and building this community and helping supply this community with products for, for many years. Um, he was well-loved. He was probably one of the most, uh, influential people in my life and, um, and just will be very dearly missed and, and just wanted to, to give condolences to my entire family and the entire Howard family, uh, and for that loss. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you very much. We'll down, move on down to the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion. Commissioner Hughes, second. Commissioner Gilbert on the second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution appropriating one hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Bend Cur Road Water Project in Bradley County to Cleveland Utilities is allowed by conditions and terms of the American Rescue Plan Act for funds allocated by Resolution twenty-one, twenty-two-one dash fifty and authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to execute an agreement with Cleveland Utilities regarding said appropriations. Put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers. Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Fourteen in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Commi, uh, agenda item B, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution appropriating eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for Dry Valley Road Water Project in Bradley County to Cleveland Utilities is allowed by the conditions and terms of the American Rescue Plan Act[1460.58]